You want me to talk like this? Oh, stop it. My name is Dennis Stark. I use my old preacher voice. Actually, I was an old banker, so that doesn't count. My name's Dennis Stark. I'm the current chairman of the board of John Knox Village. I'd like to introduce our board members that are in attendance today. Gary Wright. Gary served as our attorney for about 50 years, and then when he left, we brought him on the board as a board member. And Bill O'Connell. Bill, as most of you know, was a former politician here in Orange City. I think he became king of Orange City. I think that was the title he had, I'm not sure. Anyway, welcome. I'd like to say that we have finished Valencia Landing. I just called it something else to somebody else. I was just trying to make sure I got the name right. So our construction for the near period is completed, and the board's intent is to look at the infrastructure, and we will begin paying attention and taking attendance, fixing things that you may have noticed need repair here in the village. We appreciate your kind attendance tonight. Without further ado, I'll get out of the way and turn it over to Joe. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Can I get a little more light up here? Maybe, please? Possibly? All right. Today, we celebrate our employees. So thank you for being here today as we celebrate. I did say more, didn't I? We're here to celebrate a very special group of employees. Our incredible John Knox Village of Central Florida employees who've dedicated five, 10, 15, 20, and 25 years of service to our community. Our success as a community is not measured solely by the buildings that we have or the services that we offer, but by the care, compassion, and commitment of each of you who make John Knox Village feel like home for our residents. Our employees dedicate hard work, genuine passion for what they do to make a difference in the lives of our residents that we serve every day. To our five-year honorees, you've reached an employment milestone, and in these five years, you've already shown strong commitment to our mission. Your fresh ideas and enthusiasm have a breath of fresh air. Thank you for joining our team and the energy and positivity you bring to your roles. You are the future of the community, and we look forward to many more years of your growth with us. For those celebrating 10 years of service, a decade is a remarkable achievement. Your dedication over these 10 years reflect a deep connection with our residents, your colleagues, and our shared mission. You've seen us through changes and challenges. Your experience and insights are invaluable. You're not just employees, you are leaders and mentors for those around you. Thank you for your unwavering commitment and for helping us maintain the highest standards of care and service. For our 15-year honorees, your 15 years of service are a testament to your loyalty and passion. You've built strong relationships, your dedication has impacted countless residents and their families. Your perseverance and reliability inspire all of us, and your contributions are woven into the very fabric of John Knox Village. Thank you for your steadfast presence in the countless ways you've gone above and beyond. For those reaching 20 years of service, two decades with us, that's a lifetime of care, compassion, and countless memories. Your work has shaped our journey as a community, and your dedication has touched the lives of so many. You are the heart and soul of our team, and your commitment sets a shining example for all. Thank you for your incredible service, your wisdom, and your kindness that you bring to work every day. And finally, to our 25-year honoree, 25 years is an extraordinary milestone that speaks volumes about your dedication, resilience, and passion. You've seen the community evolve and play a significant role in its growth and success. Your legacy is felt in every corner of our community, and your commitment has impacted everyone you've encountered. Thank you for your quarter-century of exceptional service, for your leadership, and for being a constant source of strength and inspiration. No matter how many years you've been with us, each of you plays an essential role in making John Knox Village a warm, welcoming place that it is. You are the reason our residents feel at home, they smile, and their families feel at ease. As we celebrate your years of service, we also celebrate your dedication, compassion, and countless ways you make a difference daily. On behalf of the entire leadership team, the board of directors, and our residents, we thank you for being the heart of John Knox Village of Central Florida. So here's to many more years of service, growth, and making a difference. Congratulations to all of you. I'm going to call Elvira up so she can pull the names. She can tell you.
Celebrating five years of service, Merlina Baker, Majestic Oaks CNA. Celebrating five years of service, Rosalia Rebouillard, Majestic Oaks Housekeeper. William Rivera, outpatient rehab PTA. Charlie Smith, Housekeeper. Gerbera Williams Corey, Majestic Oaks RN. Celebrating 10 years of service, Patricia Earhart, Marketing Senior Living Sales Representative. Ashley Hamm, Majestic Oaks RN MDS Coordinator. Ronald Jemison, Transportation Driver. Celebrating 15 years of service, Sandra McPhillips, Hospitality Administrative Assistant. Celebrating 20 years of service, Stephanie Falstraw, Resident Nurse. Celebrating 25 years of service, Catherine Sirson, Home Health Aid. Unfortunately, she will not be able to come in today. Thank you so much.
All right. I think the reason now you're all here, right? Should I just go to the end? Nooo. You robbed me of the fun. Can't do that. All right. If you're new, and there are plenty of you that are new, we want to make sure that you understand our budget philosophy. Entrance fees. The entrance fee, the big number that you paid before you moved in, what is that money for? Your entrance fee prepays healthcare, essentially is what it is. This is what we use your entrance fee for. Debt. To which? We have none. Right? Capital budget items? New vans? New transportation? Other projects that we have when we do renovations? New construction? Valencia Landing? Holly Branch? We do that. And, in some cases, entrance fee refunds. When somebody decides they don't stay for four years and they get a small refund, that's what we do. That's what entrance fees go for. And this is the second part, is the important part. Your monthly service fees. Your monthly service fees go to pay monthly bills. They pay payroll, operating expenses. We don't dip into your entrance fee to pay our monthly bills. You probably have heard some organizations do that. We're not one of them. One of the reasons to be, one of the ways to be financially sound is don't take money that you have from your savings to pay your monthly bills. It's critical. So, when we talk about, is that, can we do that? Sometimes we may say yes. It depends where that money comes from. So, we don't. I haven't. In February, I'll be here 10 years. The entire time I've been here, not once have we ever taken a dime from an entrance fee to pay a monthly bill or payroll. That is a testament to how well we do, and to you, that everyone that calls John Knox Village home. Okay. This is where the fun begins. I'm going to kind of go through some of these things. These are what we refer to as our biggest revenue. The blue lines is our 2025 budget. The red is 2024 annualized. And the lime green, if you will, I know it's not lime, but I'm going to call it that, I'm going to call it green, I'll just say green, is our 2023 actual. So Majestic Oaks, if you look at the 2023 actual, they actually had about $11 million in revenue. And this year, this next year, we're budgeting $14.9 million in revenue. It's important, and we start with Majestic Oaks, that is where we offer healthcare. That is where a lot of organizations like ours, very similar ours, have decided to decrease the size of their health center because it's too costly to operate. I'm going to tell you, it is. It is costly to operate. But we've made that commitment, and we have a little bit different plan. We believe that we can continue to operate Majestic Oaks just the way it is, and go ahead and make it a vital, continue to make it a vital part of our community. There are organizations which are even in Central Florida that have decided to either shut down their healthcare automatically and have a new agreement with another organization for them to provide healthcare. That's not why you came here. You came here because of, whether you knew it or not, you don't know what the cost of future healthcare is going to be. I don't. I don't have a crystal ball. But I do know if we operate our health center the best that we possibly can, that it will be there for you when you need it. So as we look at Majestic Oaks, that is three and a half, almost $4 million more from 2023 to '25 that we're budgeting in revenue. And you'll see that they're at, they're going to be right about 13.7 at the end of this year, annualized. Assisted living? Assisted living in '23 was 2.4. '25, they'll be 3.4. They're going to be about $3.2 million by the end of this year if they keep. Now, what has made all the difference in the world? Occupancy. Home health? As we look through home health, home health in '23 was 727. We're budgeting 1.1 million for both Medicare and private. In Oak Park, Physicians' Practice Pharmacy and outpatient rehab in '23, they were at 2.4. We're projecting 3.1. One of the things that you have done, which has helped dramatically, and when we look at our monthly service fee increases, is what other services are you utilizing? You're utilizing the pharmacy, you're utilizing outpatient rehab, and you're utilizing Physicians' Practice, essentially Martha. Those have come across, and we have seen those two, those three departments actually do quite well this year. Okay. Independent living revenue. You'll see that in '23, we're at 18.7. This year, we expect to be just under $21 million. We're projecting $21 million independent living revenue by the end of the year. And next year, we're projecting to be about $23 million. Don't do the math. I did the math for you, okay? All right. Number of units. This is what our budget looks like. 300 cottages. We have a budget, we're going to budget 282 occupied. That's a 94% occupancy apartments. We're working on that. We have a plan, and we're exercising our plan. 100 apartments. When we get done, that number will be smaller, and they'll be occupied. The villas between Valencia Landing and Holly Branch, between, excuse me, Silverstones and Holly Branch, there are 74, and we have a budgeted occupancy of 72. Valencia Landing is 66 of 68. So if you just take apartments out of it, between cottages and the villas, we have budgeted a 95% occupancy. That's quite a task. Assisted living, 92, let's call it 45 out of 49. And healthcare, 120 out of 35, because we started our renovation at Majestic Oaks, so we have one hallway closed down. Other interesting fact, this time last year, we had an independent living, we had 590 independent living residents. Today, we have 661. Last year at this time, we had a total resident population of 675. Today, we have 827 residents on campus. Healthcare expenses. We'll go through this. As you can imagine, Majestic Oaks, 14.2 million is what we're looking at for their budget. 13 million is what they were, they're annualized to do this year, so you can see they're a big lion's share. When you look at the budget being $46 million, and they're going to add 14, 15 million to that, that is a good portion of that. Oakview Suites is just about $2.1 million. Home health is going to be, let me move a couple pages ahead for you. Sorry. Home health is going to be right at 1.1 million. And expenses, in Oak Park, it will be, we project them to be about $2.7 million in expenses this year, 3.1 next year. Operational expenses, these are all the rest of them. I'm just going to put them all up there, because as you can see, dining, dining in and of itself, we're, this year, we're projecting at 5 million. Dining for next year is projected at $5.7 million. An increase of $700,000. Plant goes from about 5.3, 5.5 to 7.1. Why would that be? Staff and energy costs. That's our biggest, those are the biggest ones. Laundry, housekeeping will be about 2.1. Security is just under $1 million. And transportation is $553,000. So, as we look at our, as we look at '23 budget, that budget that is no longer here when you annualize it, we had a loss of about, just about $1.5 million. When we had all of our adjustments, we were at $1.5 million. This year, we expect to have an annualized revenue of about 2.7. Now, again, what drove that is occupancy. The 71 more residents on campus than we had at this time last year. And then, next year, we're budgeting for about $650,000 in net operating income. These are the drivers and the considerations for our budget. Employee health insurance kind of gave a range, because we're, why we continue to negotiate, we should continue to go through this. Ranges are the best we can do. Employee health insurance is somewhere between 6 and 10%. And we are self-insured, and we pay for single coverage. We pay just about 85% of the health insurance coverage for our employees. Employee wages between 3 and 6%. I'm going to tell you 6% because sometimes we have to do a market adjustment for a position or positions. Food between 4 and 8%. Vendor costs, 3 and 6. Now, these numbers look far more reasonable than they did last year, don't they? Auto is probably closer to 8. Property insurance, we're all saying our prayers, 10 to 15% increase. Other insurances, 5 to 10. And utility costs, 3 to 5. Minimum wage. If you didn't know, you should, there's not, all our JKV employees make at least $15 an hour. The Florida state minimum was supposed to go to 15, is going to 15, September of '26. We did it two and a half years ahead of time. We did it in February of this year, by February 1st of this year, we did, moved all our employees to $15 an hour. Third-party reimbursement, what we receive for Medicare, Medicaid, HMOs for Majestic Oaks, we expect an increase of somewhere about 1 to 3%. Social Security, cost of living adjustment is going to be 2.5%. And then the weighted CPI, and that's Consumer Price Index for the southeast region, that's specifically what we look at, is 2.3. Next slide. All right. I had to have a little bit of fun. Why do I do this? This is the annual average service fee for per-occupied unit. So this information is at the end of '23. '24 information won't be out until May of next year. And it's pretty easy to tell where you are, right? The average, the average annual service fee for an occupied unit at John Knox Village is $41,723. Many of these on here are our competitors. And we can, we can start picking at them. $50,000 at Westminster Woods at Jewelington Creek. Lakeview Terrace, I know is in excess of 52,000. John Knox Village of Florida, so if you were thinking about moving to Pompano, that is an average entrance fee of $57,473. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. And then, there are two of us that currently have no debt. The other one you look at, Concordia of Tampa, that is the, that is the community that no longer exists. It was at one time John Knox Village of Tampa, and then Concordia purchased it, and now they're changing it to, if I remember correctly, they're changing it to housing for a university. I don't know if it's University of Southern Florida. So, what are we going to do? What are we asking you for, for next year? Cottages and villas? 2.9% increase in monthly service fees. Apartments? Zero. Now, I want to take a minute on apartments. Why do we take apartments? Because we've talked that probably some of our occupancy issue in our apartments is that the monthly service fee is too high. By contracting those and making a number of bigger units, we're going to reprice those so we can have greater occupancy. Many of, 62 of 100 apartments only have one bathroom. And I can tell you from people coming through, everybody wants at least two bathrooms. So the plan is, is to make as many units as we can have two bathrooms. Many of the units that we're doing have two bedrooms, have three bedrooms and two baths, or two bedrooms, a den, and two baths. Majestic Oaks is a 4% increase. Oakview Suites is a 4% increase. And second-person fee is 2.9, same as the first person. Dining program? We don't anticipate making any changes in the dining program. The reason being is, we don't plan on changing our prices, except perhaps on some higher items. But we just went ahead and we looked at our dining program. We have 71 entrees that are under $15 a meal. So you would get soup, salad, fruit, bread, all for under $15 a meal. So we don't, we don't anticipate changing that fee, or making the allocation bigger because for many of you, one of the things we hear from you is, you're not spending what you have anyway. So, that being said, that's where we're at. Questions? Oh, come on. You don't get a round of applause for 2.9%? There's a lot of people that worked really hard to get that down to where it needed to be. We're proud, and I know the board is very proud, of being able to come back and say, hey, we're passing a 2.9% increase on. We, we don't have all our numbers because not all organizations have presented their financials to their residents as of yet, meaning presented their budget of what they're going to do. We're just early in the game. We do it earlier than just about anybody else. But we know that there are communities out there, just, one community just passed on a 12% increase to their residents. A 12% increase. That's a lot of money. I don't care what you're paying, 12% is a big number. We know we have issues. We know we have, we have a plan to address those. A 2.9%. There's a lot of people that put in a lot of hard work to make that happen. So, without any questions, I'm going to thank you for your time, and you have... Here. Remember tomorrow at 10 o'clock? Remember? Yep. Operation Protect and Secure. We're going to have people around the campus, they're going to be wearing yellow vests, all they are is observing. So as we move forward into the next issue, we can develop a plan on how we plan on to deal with an active shooter. All right? Thank you so much. Oh, Jesus.